I'm gonna, we're just start with introductions. Let's start with everybody on the screen participating virtually.
Hi, this is Amy. I couldn't hear you guys till just now, but now we're good. Hello.
Hey, Courtney Westling, Government Relations.
I'm Parker Myras. I'm the student representative.
Great. Andrew?
Andrew Scott, Board Chair.
Julia Brum Edwards, Committee Chair, Grand Gourdon Bar.
Gary Hollins, Committee Member.
Liz Large, Contracted General Counsel.
Jonathan Garcia, Chief of Staff.
Here, Brad Jones, Assistant Assistant.
All right, we have a relatively short agenda, seeing as we're building off the last couple of meetings that we had. The first item was last meeting, we had a prioritization of the dates and the, and instead of picking a particular date, we sort of ranked ordered them. And on the agenda is the order in which they go from the least desirable to the most desirable. With the, the two that are the dates that seemed most optimal based on just timing of legislative sessions and turn out what else might be in the election and when we might go for a bond, that the two elections that we're currently looking, looking at is November 2023 and May of 2024. And Andrew, I don't know, do you feel like we need like some, a formal recommendation from this committee? Or that we can just state as informal? Do you think we need, because I'm not trying to ask, do you think we need to devote on this or?
No, in terms of just this, this, this ranking. No, I think this is the sensitive.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that good with you?
Yeah.
And Parker, are you okay with us advancing as sort of the informal this recommendation from the committee that November 2023 and May 2024 as the primary, um, primary dates that we'd be, elections that we'd be looking at?
Uh, yes, that's, that's consistent with the decision from last meeting, right?
Yes.
Yep, I'm with that.
Okay, and just, Amy, are you, um?
I am, yep.
You're, okay. Go ahead, Andrew.
Just one clarifying question. We've got November 23 and May 24 as sort of combined. Was that sort of the sense that they were equally
Um, I
equivalents or? And I'll, I'll say for me, I, I, the order is fine. I would, I would put, you know, May 2024 slightly less than November 2023, so I might have had.
Yeah, I think I might be, um, the same place. You, it just seemed, um, to be, it seems like a slightly, slight difference in preference.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not huge, just like, I might, I would maybe just list them in sequential order.
Okay, we can do that.
I think also it's important to remain open on that because we don't know what else might show up on the ballot.
Yeah, well, that's what I, maybe not taking a formal vote, but here's, and that's why I'm leaving them all there because they, in reality, are all options, although the May 2023 will at a certain point be a longer option, but that we have sort of a menu of different dates. So I'll make that. So you're saying the May 2024, it would be four and the most desirable would be November 2023?
That's my idea.
Yeah. And again, I think we still have a lot of flexibility. We'll lose the May 2023 at a certain point. And then, um, based on current law, the committee, um, said they want to re-up the same, same rate that we are allowed to, which would be a renewal. Um, and then the other piece, um, that we need to ask as a committee is, um, having the Intergovernmental Committee look at any sort of changes, legislative changes that might come about. And I know, Courtney, or Amy, if you want to speak to that, just as, as an up, more as an update versus, um, another legislative session hasn't even started, but share kind of where you, where you are or what's happened in the committee.
Yeah, I think, and I'll, Amy, I'll defer to your Director Konstant. I'll refer to, defer to you. But I was just going to say that, you know, I think we, there are some, I can bring a list to this committee of some of the options that we could consider around pursuing something legislatively to allow us to increase statutory limits. But I think, you know, you all should decide how you want to discuss those and at what venue to do that.
And Andrew and I were talking about this the other day, and I'm happy to sort of frame the issue at our meeting tomorrow and to solicit perspective from the other board members who haven't been part of those conversations in the Intergovernmental Committee as to whether there is an appetite for seeking some, some redress to that in this session. I'm, I'm interested in everyone's perspectives on that.
Yeah, I think what would be most helpful is if we had sort of the list of the two or three sort of most likely, um, opportunities, what people do, it's statutory, what sort of, um, referral that can have that as sort of the we have a sense of what it is that we're providing a point of view on.
I would, you know, I was thinking, and Amy, I appreciate the thoughts about tomorrow because we are approving the legislative agenda. I'm wondering if tomorrow, having a conversation just to see where the board is about the general concept of whether that's something we want to pursue. And, and if there is a majority that says, yeah, we want to pursue, you know, potential legislative changes. I think we can add pretty generic language because our legislative agenda is pretty generic to begin with. We're going to add pretty generic language that says, you know, yeah, pursue, you know, pursue potential changes in, you know, statutory language around maybe it's levy limits. And then figure out when do we come back and in what forum to have the more specific conversation that I think you're referencing because we need to have that as a board.
Yeah.
But I think you're right. We need to see the, the actual statutory changes.
Right, because it's, it's very theoretical otherwise, and it seems like we could, you know, have that in early, early January. And the thing about approving a legislative agenda, every, every entity that approves a legislative agenda, it's like to be, you know, amended depending on the, I mean, who's the chair and.
Right.
Okay.
I mean, it also goes hand in hand with the conversation about whether there's general interest in potentially increasing our levy number as well, because if there isn't, then there's no need to seek relief from the statutory cap.
Well, I think the, the conversation we had in this committee was there was, there was interest to see if we could increase it. But under current, under, using the current statute, if we increased it, we essentially would have to give the increase, any increase
That's correct.
to, to the state. So it wasn't for a lack of interest, but like, that's why we landed with, like, currently what we, if, if if there isn't any change, the recommendation is that, you know, go with the rate allowed in the current statute because then we'd be maximizing what we could actually keep.
But, but I will say, uh, Chair Brum Edwards, that even if we maintain the current rate, at some point in the not too distant future, we are going to have, have this conversation again. Because if we do nothing, because we do have, you know, the enrollment decrease coupled with the 3% inflationary element of the statutory cap or limits. So even if we don't increase the rate, we may be running into that, that threshold or that limit in the next few years.
Okay, so that's a great, um, issue for staff to advise us on when we get to the point of referring something. So we don't get caught in a position where we refer something that is going to get us into a position in which we're sending.
Yeah, and I reached out to Carol Samuels today to clarify, and I can share what I learned.
Okay.
So, um, if we go from the least desirable to the most desirable, and November 2023 is the most desirable, my recommendation is that this committee not meet in January or February in the sense that we don't need to meet if activity, but that I would recommend that we come back in March or April. Because if we're going to go in November, the referral has to happen by August 18th, which means we'd be doing work during this summer. But we really should back up and do some of that work and community outreach, signaling our intention, planning, soliciting feedback from the school community while the school community is still in session. So unless anybody objects, I am not going to schedule any meetings in January. At least like say, great or.
I think that's good.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then we come back again in March or April with, and sort of set things up so that we could have some conversations with the school community while, before school's out. And then be, um, I'll, you know, if we need to make adjustments because of what's happened, something happens in a legislative session that we're all ready to put something together. And ready to go in the summer with a, and then with the fall campaign. Okay?
So I'm good.
I mean, and if, if we don't have a change, um, if there's not a statutory change, um, this legislative session, it's pretty straight. I think, you know, we've got the bones from the last, um, referral and also from the last, um, campaign, so we should be in, in good shape. And let's see. We've already talked about the legislative changes in the 2023 legislative session. One that, I'm skipping to number, number six, um, is that we'll want to go in November of 2023, that clears the November 2024 ballot for the bond. And this will be, of course, um, you know, up to, up to board leadership next year. But some sort of initial planning so that we're set to go with a bond because the bond is just, as you know, Andrew, since you shared the last bond committee, um, it's more complicated than a just straight renewal of a local option. So I would suggest that we get that underway.
Yeah, yeah.
Did have a question that I sent to, um, Dan and Marina. Is, that I think it would be good to have an answer on, just again, thinking about that bond being more of a complicated referral. Is the status of where we are with the planning for Cleveland and IDW Wells?
I don't have an answer, but I saw your question to them. I know they're doing a lot of work on updating spending and forecasts right now. And so I think that was set to be done in mid-December, which may be later this week.
Okay.
That was as of a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, I guess the main thing is, one of the things that I feel like we promised the community is that they would get part of this bond, the $20 million each of the schools to do all the planning so that if we win in November of 2024, they'd be all ready to go. And so just the question is, is that planning and spending underway?
There is immense planning and spending, but like, could you details beyond that? I mean, I think a lot of the projects are finishing on time and on, or on their budget. So I think it's, but those are broader headlines. And I, I'm responsible for me to speak up and have to inform Marina on this status.
But, but that is, that is still the timeline that we're on, that the conceptual master planning would be conducted before, before that, obviously, 2024. And I think they're getting ready in the new year to start to have some public engagement on IDW Wells and Cleveland.
Yeah, because my understanding is like, it was to be more than conceptual, but more like ready to, ready to go.
Please don't parse my words to that. I'm not trying to signal to you anything other than that.
No, I'm only looking at you because like, it would be useful to, to know just because if we're thinking of this longer range, um, sort of planning about how we sequence, um, the referrals, that that would be good. So, um, any other commentary or?
No, I don't think so. Um, yeah.
So I just had a one question. I know we've spoken on it before around how much we get to go on the levy piece if we just do it at the current rate that we did before. Now, just, um, forgive me because this is all new to me with this stuff here. But now with the amount that we are expected to receive with this new levy coming in, would that actually be higher because property values had increased since the last levy had started? And then how much difference is that if it is new money coming in? How much difference is it from what we currently spending with the additional that we might give?
It's a great question, and I know like our first meeting, I think we had the chart. I know, Courtney, do you by any chance have that? We can get that for you. It's, it's somewhat, it's somewhat higher, but not a big number higher.
And we have fewer students, so there's some.
So the, the cap is getting closer, but you know, there was also something, we were talking a little earlier that, because I can't remember from, I think it was Carol's presentation, that levy collections have actually been dipping a little bit. And there was a reason why, and she explained it, and for the life of me, I can't remember what that reason was. Does anyone else remember?
If you think the, I, I don't know if that is because of the lower enrollment, but the ADMW is one of the factors in the equation.
Of our cap.
Of our cap, of our cap.
Yeah, of the collection. This had to do with the actual collections and I just, I remember seeing it and thinking, well, that's weird. And then I remember Carol saying something and said, oh yeah, that, that does make sense, but for the life of me, I can't remember.
We need to answer both those questions. And Gary, the answer to, it's in the meeting materials for the first, the first meeting. It's like, we get the 3%, but it's, it's not a, a big increase.
Well, I don't know if it's considered a big increase, is that?
Like a couple of million dollars is what, is my recollection.
Well, and that's why I'm asking, that's with that, and if we do, if we do the legislative session and they do a full additional cap. I just wanted to be curious when we talked about some of these other things that, you know, we have needs for. If some of that other money can be dispersed, and I know we have to talk about that in the levy, as far as we can spend the funds on. That's all, just want to know where that number is outside of what we already have been getting compared to what we are going to be getting with new property tax increases. And I will, my, my thought process is that we can use some of that to, um, mitigate some of the other things that we talked about. Example, the foundation piece, right? If we can, if we are, like I said, this year we had 100 million and then with the cap and with the additional money from property taxes, um, increases, well, that maybe, maybe we get 180 and 110 in. Then we can use say six or seven million to look at things like that. That's every example.
Yeah, so, and I think, I don't want to speak for November though, but I think the answer will be as much as that property taxes may be growing, they're not going to be growing as.
After our, after our live stream, they're, they're, this happened and they're fixing it, so we're not streaming.
Okay.
So we just.
So there's a way to.
I believe so.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll say it again when they come back.
Sorry.
Is not going to keep up with the increase in, in teacher salaries.
There we go.
And so $100 million this year buys X number of teachers. Next year, you're going to need 105 million to buy the same number of teachers.
Right, right. And that's what I think, but that property taxes have increased more than inflation in the last five, five years, and will happen in the next 10.
Uh, no, because property taxes are capped at 3%. Property tax increases. I mean, they sometimes grow at 4% if you, if with, um, overall, they sometimes grow a little bit more, but individual property taxes are capped at 3%. And inflation for the last couple of years has been much higher than that. And our, our wage growth has been higher than 3% as well, for the most part, so.
I'm just looking to see Gary while we're, oh. Do you have it? I don't think I have the, I, I have part of the story, but this is from Carol's slides on November 8. I don't think it answers the question entirely, but it shows.
No, sorry. Yeah, that's, that's the, oh, there's some shows. So it's, it's been growing, but this isn't the.
I don't see rejection forward. I didn't see that in the.
This is where we're at at 2022. Right, versus 2022.
Yeah, which is 108. We can give the answer.
Yeah, it's, it's.
But I, I, I'm, I'm pretty sure. I mean, I, I think to use that, to use that levy money for anything else than other than what we're already using it for will require an increase. And we don't have room to increase right now with the cap, and so the cap would have to go up.
That's what I said, we know when we talk about increasing the cap as well, that's what I was looking at as well.
Well, this is what, why I really think we should have something, um, concrete to, or the options. So that you can see
Yeah.
what it is and also what it takes. Because like some, one of them, one of the options would be you have to pass a statewide constitutional amendment. And then it's like, who's going to run the statewide campaign? And so, you know, some of them are bigger stretches than others. They're all a pretty big stretch, just for what it's worth to, to get there, but some of them are pretty substantial, but it. So abs, and absent any change, we have a pretty predictable, you know, the, the rate, the amount we're going to get is pretty predictable. And it's about what we get now. Anything else? Amy or Parker, do you have anything else you want to?
I do not. Thank you.
Any public comment?
Director Brum Edwards, I had one quick clarification, just, just to be really explicit. There's obviously the constitutional, you know, referral. That path is obviously more challenging if we were going to pursue something. The two more, I think, like reasonable, and I use quotes, I think, in those because nothing's easy. But would be to increase the statutory limits again, which we did four years ago. And I know we've talked about this in previous sessions, but I think it's good to put a fine point on it. And then the other would be to just eliminate the cap altogether. I don't know the politics around that. I know that this is wonky. So it's all about communication and how you talk about it, but I just wanted to make sure I called those two out because those are probably the easier path compared to the constitutional option.
So this is, I'm clear. I hear you guys. One is increase the statutory limits and the other one is eliminate the cap altogether. So let's say if we end, we go for the eliminate the cap altogether, right? So that means we get all of the money that we should be getting and anything won't be going, won't spill over into another pot.
That's my understanding, not being the expert on collections. But yeah, if there's no limit, then we would keep everything we raise. And if there's a increased limit, we would still be beholden to something, but it might give us a lot more wiggle room.
Okay. Can, uh, can we go for, listen, can we go for both? Like if we try to go for the elimination and if we can't talk, can't get that, go for the increase?
Yeah, this is what I think.
I like your strategy.
This is what we should look at. And, um, you know, then the second, the second piece then is, um, then like what we're, I think we should do some research or some polling to see what the appetite is, um, from our, so, so we know what our community might feel about. That would be then, instead of just a renewal of the tax, it would be an increase.
And, and that, that's such a key factor in this conversation. I think we should come up with some options, but then, you know, I mean, that, you know, I, I know where I'm leaning in terms of wanting to do it. But if we go out and find 60% support, well, that's great news. If we go out and find 40 or 45% support, well, okay, maybe that's, you know, not, you're not, you're not going to work, right?
That's a question. So if we, if we're talking about eliminating or increasing the statutory limits, that's still not an increase, right?
Yeah, I'm talking about pulling the change. I'm talking about pulling an increase.
Oh, a separate, okay, got you, got you, got you. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's a pretty straightforward campaign just to do a, and we, we know how to do that. And we haven't had an increase in a while, so, and you just never know, just like during the pandemic, we weren't sure where people were going to end up on the bond. Whether like we had to do a skinny bond or we could go, go for a bigger bond. And it turned out people, even though there was a 20% unemployment rate at a certain point in time, that people were, yes, we want to invest in this and we definitely want to invest in albina and in students of color. So we went for it.
So a question, so if we, so if we say for instance, increase the statutory limits or eliminate cap, would that be the same amount of revenue we can get in as doing an increase?
So it, it's a two-step process, right? So, so we would need to figure out either eliminate the cap or raise it by some amount. If, if it's eliminated, we would have choice to see how much.
Right.
If it was raised by a certain amount, then that would be the same limit we have now. Like, you know, we, we won't, we won't increase our levy right now because we would just be funding students the rest of the state. If we increase the cap by $20 million, then we could increase our levy by $20 million. We increase the cap by $50 million, we can increase our levy by $50 million. So it's really, I see it as this legislative session, which is also why these, you know, the, the, the May of 2023 would be really, really hard to go out. Let's see what we can get in this legislative session. If we get nothing, well, then we know, right? And if we get something, then we know, and then come back and, and, you know, there's still a little bit of time in issue.
Yeah.
Julia, to your point about the legislative session won't be over until the end of June. We need to refer by August. Will I engage people on the levy prior to that? So, but I think some of that work can be happening simultaneously, and frankly, some of that work is also going to be in support of our change. If, if we can show that local voters polling are in favor of an increase levy that's tied to, you know, more support for students coming out of the pandemic or lower class sizes or, you know, filling some, some gaps and holes. That's really powerful to take to our local legislators, to say, your voters, your constituents would like to see an increase in this tie back to these other things. You don't want to deny them the chance to vote on that, do you?
Right.
I think that's where we start. I mean, these, their constituents are our constituents. And so, you know, I mean, that's where we need to, to make this connection.
And I can't, I mean, I think this is just what I'm thinking. If we are talking to our constituents right then, more of your money get to stay here, right? I, I just don't see why they would say no.
Yeah.
You know, as a whole.
I won't say it's war of their money. I mean, the money that they're currently paying in the state school fund will stay the same. This would be, we're going to increase your taxes, but all that money that we're increasing your taxes is going to go back into Portland schools.
Right, but we have been made the cap piece, right? We will not have to raise the, the limit, right?
It would be raised. Like we'd be increasing taxes if you got rid of the, the cap.
Gary, want to hear what you're saying?
Maybe I understand. Maybe I'm thinking the cap is talking about the money that we would, we have, we raise a certain amount and anything over that goes into.
But we don't raise over that right now. We're under the cap right now. We're just real close. And so right now, all that money that we raised in levies is still staying in Portland schools.
Right.
I, I think I might hear you saying, there is a point if we don't raise the cap, that we might go.
Go that round?
In which case then some of our property taxes will be going.
Have it, that's in the cap yet.
Not at that point, yeah.
That's right. Okay.
Well, I'm not sure.
And that, and that, what you just said, Director Scott, is not imminent, but it's not that far off if we stay where we are.
Gotcha.
The other question I would have if we increased the cap, this would be a, this spring is, or if we did something, I guess when, Courtney and Amy, if you're still on, um, if you bring something back, the one thing I would want to know also is what impact does equalization have on any of this? And in the past, we've been able to have a local option with equalization, it being sort of outside equalization. So within the state school fund, there's equalization. But then this local community is going to do local option. And I just want to make sure that even if we increase that, that's not a, if we do something to increase the statutory limit, we don't then run the risk of another issue with equalization.
I don't, I think if, and I don't want to misunderstand you, but if we, when we hit the limits, then anything over that does go. when we hit the limits, then anything over that does go into the formula, the equalization formula. If we stay within it, then we keep the money. So if we, just like we were, we've been talking about, if we if we decide as a as a district, as you would decide as a board to increase the rate, then we, yeah, without making any change, we're going to give a lot back to the to the equalization part of the formula.
Okay. So in order for us to even think about raising, we will have to get the cap increased or eliminated altogether.
Correct.
Okay.
I think those two have to go hand in hand, basically, and that's, you know, and that's not a sure thing because you have to get the legislature to do it. Everything's possible, but I just, you know, it's not it. We need to make sure we understand that we will have to really have a good strategy to talk about it and and educate our lawmakers, because this stuff is, as you all know, really dense.
Is there, Kara, is there any public comment? Okay, then we'll almost report to the next board meeting, what the recommendation of the committee is, and we will first some dates.
Can I ask one question? Because I didn't, it's not clear to me. So if you're not meeting again, most likely until March or April. My guess is that any decision about pursuing a statutory change would come through the Intergovernmental Committee?
So right, this is like the this is the levy. And my assumption is at some point, you're going to bring back the three or four options. We're going to have a board level discussion. And the actions in Salem, I'm not sure it's in a committee.
Oh, I, yeah, no, you're helping you're helping me by just reminding me that you want to bring it to a full board discussion. What I what I'm just thinking is what's the hey, go do it? You know, what what do we need to do to make sure that we can go to Salem and I need a decision and a
So, yeah, so Courtney.
Do you ever prefer more concrete?
So Courtney, I think if 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 the board, again, I want to get ahead of the board. If the board amends the legislative agenda tomorrow to include generic language, it says, we're going to pursue statutory cap. Then it then you have direction to pursue.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that you were going to get that close tomorrow, so that's all I need.
That's what I hope. And and then, though, what that cap looks like.
Yeah.
You know, staff needs to develop some options, and then we can talk about whether it first goes to Intergovernmental and then to the full board or straight to the full board. Either one is fine. It's got to go to the full board eventually, and I don't even think we need to take a vote. We could probably add in a work session where we, again, the full board is sort of weighing in to say, you know, yes or no, maybe we do end up taking a vote if there's a disagreement.
That's all I needed. I I misunderstood that you were going to decide whether you include that tomorrow or not.
Well, I hope so, but it couldn't. It's the board that gets it.
Okay.
Yeah, I would just suggest it maybe be a little more generic. Like something like an enhanced local option versus like what exactly it is.
Yeah, no, I'm as long as it as long as it gives Courtney the direction that.
Yeah, I I think having high level direction that we want to look into what it looks like to enhance our local option, there are multiple ways to do that, and we don't have to decide what that is and put it on the the agenda, but we have direction from the board that says we want to look into this further.
Great.
Great. Okay, so we have what we have. Thank you everybody for participating in the committee's process, and we'll see if we we need to meet in this spring. We're going to go in November
Sounds good.
Twenty twenty-three. Thanks to the staff for staffing the committee. Appreciate it.